All right, we're finna kick it off, guys. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the August 1st Board Supervisor Meeting. I'd like to call it the order at this time. We'll have our invocation. You mind?
I don't mind at all. Well, God, we start again another day thanking you for this day that you made. Lord, thank you that we can rejoice, that we can be glad in it. I pray, Father, that we will make this day a blessed and indeed, because we want to serve you and serve our fellow man, try to make the best decisions that we can make in our keeping with your will and that serve the best interest of every citizen of this county. Thank you, Father, for the life that we have here, the security and the freedom that we have here, all of which comes from you. You blessed us with it. We don't deserve it, but we thank you for it. And, Father, I pray that we would be worthy. You would get all the praise of the Lord if we'd be found worthy, Lord, for the blessings that you give us in Christ. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade.
I think Samantha said we had no one to speak in public comments.
All right.
All right, let's move on to old business.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any further discussion?
I do, I just have a question. I dropped the ball Thursday. I forgot to call the lady with the express loan. Have you talked to her, Bridgette? Okay.
So, we're not gonna pay them?
Is that on here?
It's on the consent agenda.
It's on there to pay it.
You want us to pay it or not?
No, no, I do, I do. But I told you that after the discussion that we was needing them to reduce our price going to do it. So, can we approve it based on getting that adjustment?
Yeah, you went nineteen hundred?
Yeah.
I thought it was fifteen.
Come on, man.
Well, you start low then negotiate up.
All right, I think we need to add.
Well, it's on there.
I know, but...
Can I make this a good...
Please do.
That's why I was hinting at...
Good morning, Mr. Moore.
Not yet.
We...
Can I ask that we prove that the motion to approve consent agenda will be to remove item 1D and place item 1D under additional... And it will handle item 1D under...
All right, so I...
That's my motion.
That's your motion, Mr. Gaines. Made the motion, Mr. Cross is second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried. All right, Mr. Sullivan.
Just the usual items. Item A, petition to change the assessment of 2021 real property assessment.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item B, petition to adjust 2021 Homestead exemption supplement rule.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second. Mr. Bishop, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Item C, request void the 2020 tax sale for erroneous assessment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
On the fifteenth board meeting when we had the protest, so far, we have one. And hopefully, it'll be taken care of before then, and hopefully, we won't have any more.
Good.
Appreciate it. Mr. Brute.
We will have some extension requests, but I think we're gonna file handle those sometime over in September.
All right, Ms. Bridgette.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My first item this morning, I'm asking approval of a copier contract with Toshiba for 911 addressing.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, motion carried.
The second item is requesting approval of magnet forensic assault source for the Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Gaines made the motion, I second it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Harrison.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
All right, just quick update. We got some rocks coming in, and so we're back ship sealing and micro, and we're getting some product in. So, everything should be on board to finish up like we had planned for the rest of the year.
What's the latest on the riffraff?
Uh, waiting on some barges to come in. We got it ordered, Brad.
Who ordered from? Who's it come from?
Uh, Warren, Warren, Peyton.
No, the riffraff? Reason I ask, I got somebody, y'all get a... I forget that guy's name, local guy. He's got a bunch. He said that somebody came to talk to him about it. And, uh...
We did?
He told, he told me that, uh, he said his price wouldn't change. He told me about it going up. He said it wouldn't change because I own it. I own what I have. And he said it's not, um, so he was like, I don't know why y'all buying so much of it right now. He said, pricing, you have to see that price change, especially if you're buying it from me. So, I said, well, I don't know anything about all that. That's not...
We don't have a commodity bid with him, Derek.
No.
And so, uh, but anyway, we got it ordered at our whole price, and it should be in between. Start coming in later part of this month.
All right.
Why did they go talk to him if we don't have a price with him?
Went and talked to him about getting a price, and he never contacted us with a price. I think Michael was with me that day, or Keith. Anyway, we talked to the guy, told him what we wanted the price on, and he's never pulled up. That was been over four weeks ago.
Yep.
So, he ain't never pulled up with the price.
Good morning, Mr. Parker.
Morning, Mr. President. First item we have on the agenda is Freedom Farms Phase Four. We recommend an approval of that preliminary plat. That's a District Four development. Tim, that's the one that you and I just looked at. It's got a couple, two or three lakes. Correct. A couple of entrances. Correct. And we'll go over construction plan down the road. Absolutely. After the approval of preliminary plat, they'll prepare the construction drawings, and we'll review those. And that's when we get into the hydraulics and the runoff and all that at that point.
Okay, I make a motion to approve. Second. A motion made by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, eight passes.
Item B, Mr. President, is Fallen Oak Phase Three. We recommend an approval of the final plat and the letter of credit in the amount of $161,757.35. That's also a District Four development.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Item C, Mr. President, we're requesting authority to advertise the 2022 Mill Creek Drainage Improvements Project, Phase One. That's a District Two project.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion?
Wait, our project number two. I thought we had a hold on that.
We don't have all the stuff back. We're just having everything, the authority to advertise, so whenever it comes back. It should come back sometime in 2026. So, I expect it to be...
I really thought I left here Thursday like this was a no starter.
But everything's hung up on the core, right? So, what this, what I figured I'd do here on this is save y'all some time in 2026 that you won't have to advertise it. You just have the authority. So, you need to make a note, Slay, or Keith, in your book that in 2026, it's already been, it's, you're gonna forget. Have we given the authority to advertise yet? Because it's gonna be like five years from now. And you'll be able to say, yeah, we have, we did that right before Daniel left.
I thought this was just a memory trigger for you to...
Can we do this that far out?
More than likely, there'll be three, possibly four. It just depends on how the money comes in and the timing of it.
Whether we get them out, those kinds of things are gonna be, those are preconditions on how far we know we can go with all of these ARPA projects that we have.
I'd like for it to be just three phases. I think the first part's gotta be in two, on the south side of 25, but I'd love to get 25 all the way to Barnett. But I don't, like I said, timing wise, if we can't get it all approved, we'll break it up into more phases.
There's no way this happens in this term. I'm just telling you, there's not. Nobody's ARPA project's gonna happen in this term. You gotta be prepared to understand that, front side. Because this process started...
I don't know what you're talking about, man.
No, what I'm telling you is, if it's gotta go to the core, right? Which everything but six projects have to go to the core. So, this started advertising...
It's opposite.
No, twenty-one, twenty-one has to go to the core, right?
It's opposite.
Twenty-one projects have to go to the core.
No.
The other way around, six projects have to go to the core. Twenty-one are good to go.
Yeah, and it's, it's a moving number at this point because one of our projects that we thought was gonna have to go to the core has now been consumed in the ERBR, and so it's, my, my data is not as fresh as it needs to be, given that recent happening.
So, ERBR doesn't have to get approved by the board?
No, that's a state aid bridge replacement project, and it's handled under all of those regulations.
If any of those six projects has to go to the core, it won't happen in this term.
Yeah.
Because this, remember, we started this in October of last year, and we hadn't even gotten to this part yet.
It's, it's safe for you guys...
It's the biggest human right, like...
Yeah. So, it's, it's safe for y'all to assume that to, to get to the $50 million magic number, which we all understand why that's the magic number, right? To get there, we have about thirty projects that will fit into that, that estimated cost calculation, about thirty. Out of the thirty, it's safe for y'all to assume that about two-thirds of those are not gonna require significant Army Corps of Engineers interaction. The other third are probably gonna require some level of interaction with the core. And two of those are Mill Creek and Oak Grove.
Oak Grove is at Wagner.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's one right lane. The thunderstorms over there, the thunderstorms over there...
Friday said it was.
Okay. I'm not sure, when I, you may have better information than I do. I, I know that they were, Wagner was waiting on some information, and they may have gotten that as of Friday.
The core could be up to six months.
They just say we're not gonna get it done this week.
This, this won't happen in this...
Anything that we can do or that we need to watch for or put on our calendar that would hurt us as far as matching money, that we need to get this in before this time runs out?
Yes, sir.
For, and I don't mean just at the last ring of the bell, but, boy, I'd like to be in there pretty close to first.
Yes, sir. The plan now, given what you guys are... What y'all did on Thursday to authorize, as it were, in, any of, of the necessary professional services to get our application complete as possible was a huge first step. And so, my expectation, Steve, is that we now have the ability to use, to, to do everything humanly possible to make our application qualify for the most matching money. Yeah. Okay? Y'all have done everything you can do to get to that point. The rest is up to the pros to make it, to make it as complete as possible. And you'll be doing some more stuff today, because I'm gonna ask you for it. You'll be doing some more stuff today to push us even closer to that goal. So...
Okay.
More information coming.
All right, I got a motion by Mr. Cross and a second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Brute.
Mr. Slade.
Yes, sir. Looks like the first two items, gentlemen, are gonna be to set public hearings. These, these will both be set on August the fifteenth at nine AM. One's a District Two, one's a District Four. I just need one motion for A and B, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve A and B set for August fifteenth, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Item C is an authorization to publish a notice that will, uh, will give a date certain for a public hearing on which to receive public comments concerning proposed changes to the Rankin County Comprehensive Plan and Rankin County zoning ordinance. And I need authority to issue the check to pay for the publication fee, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
That publication, that, that hearing date will be for September the sixth, by the way.
September the sixth?
Yes, for September the sixth.
We haven't done it yet.
Okay, I was gonna say...
They haven't done it yet.
I was gonna say, I don't remember.
I think this is kicking it off.
Yeah.
Item D will be authorization of the Board President to execute an MOU between Rankin County and MDOT regarding receipt and use of emergency road and, road and bridge repair fund. This is a grant award, and this will be for SA 61202, which I think is midway...
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. I'll second it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Item E is some cleanup work. Authority of the Tax Collector to nullify or yet to zero out the erroneous assessment of 2018 Adlorm for PPIN 32816 at 214 Lakeland Drive. That's parcel I 8N-48.
Do I have a motion?
I move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Item F is authorization of the Board President to execute a declaration statement certifying that Rankin County Sheriff's Office constitutes a function of Rankin County government so that the Rankin County Sheriff's Office is able to obtain certification from the FAA to operate a UAV.
I'll make the motion approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Okay.
Motion carried.
Item G is to, to authorize Bodie McDonald out of the City of Richland to certify, I'm sorry, to serve as a temporary part-time assistant county prosecutor. This will assist our county prosecutor's office with respect to justice court matters. Authorization to pay him a part-time assistant fee of $100 per hour for his service. Authorization to county administrator to issue the check upon presentation of a billing statement documenting the time committed.
So, move.
All right, motion by...
Dang it.
Motion made by Mr. Cross, second by Bishop.
Don't call me that other name.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Item H is also a little bit of cleanup work. This is, we're acknowledging that back in August of 2005, the county received a petition to establish a private cemetery on behalf of Cone Hill Baptist Church. And so, we need to acknowledge that between April and August, the matters that were assigned to the county administrator at that time, which was to determine the appropriate requirements under the law at that time to certify private cemetery, that those were completed. We have some acknowledgement in the minutes of, of a clearing of the contingencies. What happened was the petition came in, and the board voted to hand it off to the county administrator to handle and to get all the requirements made. There never was a coming back to the board for the board to actually receive and clear everything up. And so, this is a way for us to clear it up now in our records. They also need to provide us with a legal description of the area that is the private cemetery on their property and a survey. That's what the law requires them to provide. So, we will clear it up with the church to get those documents submitted after the fact, and we'll get those into the land records.
Where is that at?
Cone Hill's on Shallow. It's close to where our pit...
That's what I was thinking. Okay. So, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. I'll second. Any further discussion?
So, this is just, this is clearing this up. We haven't done anything to it.
Yes, sir.
That's all they were doing, like any other cemetery, you just tell where it's gonna be.
That's right. That's where it's gonna be and show us on the map so we can get it in our land records.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
If I may, I've got one item that I'd like to just take up right now. This is kind of a follow-up, just making sure you guys are kept abreast. And this is on our situation where we are trying to clear up the memorandum of understanding that is already in place with the City of Richland, where the Tax Collector's Office back in 2011 was authorized to use that space, okay? And so, I told you guys that I had reached out to the Technical Assistance Director for the Office of State Auditor, and I had requested that we get feedback on how we proposed to update and amend that MOU to include the Tax Assessor's Office in that same space. And so, I have received a reply back from the Technical Director. It reads as follows, Dear Mr. Slade, we do not comment on individual MOUs and contracts, but the memorandum of understanding should reflect what is actually occurring. In words, you're, what he's trying to say here, I believe, is what y'all are proposing to do would actually make the MOU track what you are actually doing, which is occupying the space via the Tax Assessor's Office and the Tax Collector's Office. This is considered routine technical assistance. It's not an official declaratory opinion of this office. Trying to be as, as hands-off as they could possibly be. I think this is the best we're gonna get as it relates to getting any help out of the State Auditor's Office on the front end with what we're trying to do.
Hey, I just wanna add one thing to that. I went back on the eighteen minutes when we had it brought for the board, and we had that discussion there. I'm under the impression myself is that the eighteen minutes cover that. I mean, they, we spoke, we spoke about it, it was talked about in the meeting. We knew where that office was going. We approved the money for the full-time office, and I thought it was good on that. Because even though it may not have said it directly in the motion Ms. Oscar made that day, it was still talked about where the office was going, and I think everybody here, not Brad wasn't here, but the four of us that was here made the assumption, based on the conversation, it was going to that office anyway. So, even though it may not have been worded correctly in the minutes, I think the eighteen minutes cover that. If you go back and watch the tape, it was said that's where it was going.
That's right. So, the, the only missing link would be the fact that the City of Richland doesn't have any minutes that reflect that they are saying, yes, come on assessor and join the collector here. So, the cleanup work would be that both parties would execute an amendment to the MOU add the assessor into that MOU and make it effective all the way back to eighteen. And that paperwork piece of that is now cleared up completely. And I think you're, you're, the indication that I'm getting here is that would satisfy the auditor that there is an MOU that clearly and accurately reflects what is happening, okay? So, I guess our next step would be, if the board is prepared to do it, would be to go ahead and now authorize the Board President to execute the amended MOU. By the way, Richland has already done that. And so, this would be the last step to get that MOU clarified and in the minutes correctly, and we can put a bow on this and put it to bed.
So, do we need a motion to add it to the...
Yes, sir, if, if you will, just, I, I think it was before you, one time before, and it, y'all probably tabled that.
We did.
But just as a matter of safety, let's go on and add it back.
I'll make a motion to add this to the agenda.
All right, I got a motion to add to the agenda by Mr. Morrison. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make motion approved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's two ayes. So, we... All opposed, like sign.
I'm abstaining, I'm afraid of what may come. I don't know.
All right.
Hey, just for that same side, on that same vote side of that, just clarify what the motion says.
Yes, sir. The motion is that the Board President would be authorized to execute an amended memorandum of understanding between the county and the City of Richland that provides for the Tax Assessor's Office, similarly to the Tax Collector's Office, to occupy space in the City Hall of Richland for the purpose of having a full-time Tax Assessor's Office at the City of Richland as a satellite location.
We thought we did all this.
We, we thought we did all this back in 2018. But the, the motion, and just for clarity, because I, I do really want this to be cleared to anybody that wants to understand what we're trying to do here. The motion in 2018 did not have anything to do directly with the space. It was whether or not the assessor would be compensated for having two full-time offices in the county. This one here in Brandon, and one, it was clear from the discussion, and the other one would be at the City of Richland. In fact, a comment was made, it would be at no cost to the county. Well, there's only one place where that can happen currently, and that's at the City Hall in Richland. And your tax collector was already authorized to occupy that space. So, everybody understood at that moment that everything was pointed towards City Hall in Richland. Literally, the only thing missing was, tell me where that, that second full-time office is gonna be and tell me what sort of arrangement or cost it would be.
And I guess that's my question. Does the board need to be involved in where that office goes? Does it matter to the board?
It, it does from the, from the standpoint, Daniel, that the space, the space itself does fall under the purview of the supervisors. You guys are responsible for where the, for where the activity associated with elected officials' office happens. So, providing electricity, providing utilities, providing desks. All of that falls under the purview of the supervisors. It's, it's y'all's property and your responsibility.
So, this just motion just says it's gonna be at Richland, which we thought anyway.
It's gonna be at Richland, and it's gonna be under the same terms and conditions that we already have in place with the tax collector. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Hicks?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Item A is the authority to purchase three used police vehicles from the Missouri State Highway Patrol.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Item B is a, a good thing. It's an authority for the Board President to enter into an MOU with the Department of Finance and Administration, and this is to accept the eight million dollars funded by the state for a road department, road and bridge repair work.
All right, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Item C is authority for myself and the road manager at some point, no date has been determined yet, to travel to investigate a, potential county services and authorize travel expenses for that trip.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
We've got one of the, are you going additional business where you're getting now?
Yes, sir.
That's right. Yeah, I asked you to put discussion for the poll worker compensation deal. If we remember back during COVID, we authorized for an increase in payment for the poll workers. I got several calls after this election, I guess.
I did the same thing.
Couple months ago or whatever.
Remember, I brought something up about it the other day.
We had, I had some calls, whatever. So basically, what happened was we paid them a certain amount, like Keith can kind of clean it up and what the statute said we could pay them. We did it during COVID stuff, but then we didn't pay them back again. Other places around the area from Heinz County to Madison County, whatever, still kept their pay up on that. My intentions would be to, I know we got, is Paul Holly, oh, there he is, hidden behind the person. My intentions would be to increase that poll.
Increase your office.
Well, I see her, but I couldn't see Paul. Paul strategically hid behind the podium. My intentions would be to pay the poll workers the same amount. I mean, to keep the pay back up for those poll workers, which I believe is what, an additional fifty dollars, Keith, is that right?
It's actually, we're currently at one hundred dollars.
Yep.
We're allowed by statute to go up to one twenty-five.
Okay, so fifty, twenty-five dollars.
They have the max.
Yep, that's what I want to do, back to where it was. So I know we've got that on discussion, but I wanted to say that and then make a motion to to pay them the max according to what the statute says.
Yeah, I thought we, actually, I thought we'd already, we're at the max.
Well, I think we did it. I think we came back down.
I didn't know we was coming back down. I thought we was like.
I I did too. So when she was, several of them had called me. I told them I'd bring them.
Why did we come back down?
Well, there there was a an allowance in state law that allowed us to pay an additional fifty dollars for COVID. That that allowance expired December thirty first, so we had to go back.
So when did the one twenty-five go into effect?
I don't know.
No, no, no. I'm asking, when did it become possible for us to pay them? Because I know we've been trying to get them to increase for several years.
Right.
The last two elections, they've only been paid a hundred, right?
I know, and that was because we thought there was cap on it.
But I think, I think at one point, I thought we'd gone up during a certain time.
Thought we were.
But didn't we vote to go back up at a certain time?
No, we we were. I think we.
Maybe it was COVID or something.
We thought we had a cap. We couldn't go anymore. And then the COVID thing allowed what you're talking about, but I didn't know there was ever a point that we could increase from what we.
I guess my thing is, I want my motion to be whatever the cap, the max cap, we can pay the poll workers by the statutes, what I want to do.
Yeah, I would put it up.
And if if training is paid at a different rate, I want that to be maxed out.
Yeah, yeah, training is actually handled under a separate code section, so I don't think there's going to be any issue there, paying them separately for the training.
Yeah, what's the, is there a, is it a cap on a certain amount?
Training is twelve dollars an hour.
Huh?
Training is twelve dollars an hour up to eight hours.
And that's what we're paying?
Yes.
Okay, so we're we're paying all we pay.
So we just need to max out the poll worker day.
Yeah, so can you guys, or we need, I I want you to understand that there's a, there's two statutes that are in play here. One is for the poll managers and one is for poll workers. And I'm I'm trying to sort out at this point which is which.
Well, I think we're good with both of them.
All right. Yeah, time.
Well, yeah, but I mean, say, I don't know what the statute says.
I mean, you might help us out on, I mean, what are the poll, the regular poll workers making? So a hundred and then the poll poll manager making additional?
We have been paying since I've been here. The state refers to everybody as poll managers. We call the one in charge the precinct manager. We've always paid them the hundred and twenty-five dollars for the day pay and then the regular, what we call regular poll workers, a hundred dollars because there needed to be an incentive for somebody to take charge.
Right.
That's what we've always been told. The statute reads that they can all make, I think it's seventy-five dollars and then an additional fifty if y'all deem necessary, which a lot of counties do. We just never done all of them at the max.
So precinct manager is the nomenclature I need to be paying attention to and not poll manager?
Well, in the statute, it's going to call them all poll managers.
Right. Okay, so is there a separate, is there a separate statute that allows for the additional pay for the precinct manager?
They're not necessarily getting additional pay. We've just always given them the maximum possible pay.
Oh, okay.
Where we haven't given it to the us.
To be in charge of the precinct.
So now we're looking at, well, now you're going to have the same thing. They're going to say, well, we need, where's our extra?
Uh huh, they're going to want to know where their extra is and then they're going to know.
Everything's capped out.
We just, if we just pay them all, the most we can pay them, then that's my answer to them.
Well, yeah, but we just, she just said that.
Yeah, I know.
They do get precinct managers who.
I like more, well.
Precinct managers who pick up the supplies and then bring everything back on election central night. They get an additional ten dollars to pick up, ten dollars to bring back.
They get mileage?
They also get that. They don't get mileage. I think it's possible up to.
It has to be over.
Yeah, that's that's one of the things I had heard is the fact that because the gas is where it is and they're having to go back and forth, you know, ten bucks.
I don't remember what the statute says on the mileage, but.
It has to be over ten miles and then they're they're eligible, I believe, for a mileage reimbursement once they've gotten ten miles under their belt.
Well, I know.
So it's only for what?
They get that three miles in there, huh?
Some of them have a lot more than three.
Yeah. You down, you down my way and Steve's way, you know.
Still some of them get a lot more.
Really?
We're going down to Clear Branch and all that.
Yeah, you figured you go all the way down south and ranking or north ranking.
Your district's close, Jay. Some of us are not so close.
Yeah, you go way down Star.
Yeah, I guess my motion is to max out the pay. That's what I want to do.
Nope, well, that's a motion to add this.
A motion to add the approval, right? So I know we've had it on the on the books for the discussion, so motion to to approve the max compensation for our poll workers to add to the agenda.
Add to the agenda and a second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, black side.
I do have one, would y'all monitor any changes that y'all see that would allow us to bring these people pay a little more?
I need to watch, yeah, we beg.
A little more.
They deserve a lot more.
There's no doubt.
Give us as soon as you hear about it.
Well, the thing is, though, I I do agree that the poll manager, what you call them, they they really deserved a little more, but the way we just did it now, they're going to say, well, every one of y'all be polling, you know, what's the incentive for me?
Hey, Slade, we we also.
We made our job last quarter.
All right, let's go ahead. We've added this now. Let's go ahead and approve.
Well, we we had to have discussion.
Well, I know, I understand, but.
I know, we've already voted for that. We're fixing to go into the motion to approve.
All right, I got a motion approved by Mr. Kraus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion?
All right, let me ask this one question here for Slade's perspective. On that poll manager or whatever, are we only cap what we can pay on what the statute says or can we go above that?
No, you can't go above it.
You cannot go above, you cannot go above what the statute says.
That's correct.
So now, now what we done, we've even them all out.
But we're trying to pay them all as much as we possibly can, so.
But can they, can they get, but if they're going over ten miles, can they get the mile?
If if part of their responsibility falls under returning officer, which performs the duties described for use of a privately owned motor vehicle to perform them, if that's what they're doing.
That's what they're doing.
Then they they get ten bucks extra for doing that, taking that responsibility and they get mileage over the ten mile buffer. They get mileage. So those are the.
Are they getting that now, though?
Sir?
Are they getting that now?
I I assume.
I don't know.
No, well, then they should. I mean, seriously.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of that motion. Whatever the max we're going to pay both sides, whether it's traveling, poll workers, whatever the titles are, whatever our max compensation for those people are needs to be.
My goodness, you can Google what it take, the mileage from here to there if you want to check it, you know?
We do this and I'm not giving, but, you know, the biggest complaint I give to poll workers is how long it takes us to get their check to them.
They weren't that afternoon.
If we have to now start calculating mileage.
That's a separate check.
I'd hate, I don't want to just slow down the process of once they all submit it to actually get.
I guess my, because you cut, I hate to say cut two checks, but I mean, you cut the poll worker check and then a mileage.
They should get two checks, shouldn't they? They're coming from two different places. I mean, through two different offices. They don't get a travel type check and then their payroll type check.
It'll be a single check that's cut as soon as we get the information.
Just make it two. Make it two. So that all the others aren't waiting on the next month whenever whoever does travel.
We pay it when we receive it.
Yeah, sure.
But what I'm saying is you've got, say, five others in that precinct that's not submitting a payroll, I mean, a travel check, right?
Correct.
They shouldn't be waiting for head person, theirs to go through and then come through the travel section. You know, to them, a week may be getting their lights cut off.
It shouldn't be an additional form. There's, they're going to fill out one, the same identical form, one to have mileage, one more.
Okay, so y'all don't have to calculate.
They have one paycheck, they fill it out in the precinct, we fill in the amounts when we receive all of them back, by district, we all do our own.
We receive that at the end of the day. We receive those about by the end of the day.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion? There's, the motions have been made. All in favor, they, when they say aye.
Guys, the the, when the forms come in.
Yeah.
They go through our normal claim stock process.
I understand.
So if we get them on the fifth of the month.
Biggest thing I got from poll workers is the turnaround on the check.
They want, they really like that with that afternoon.
If they fill it out that day, they pick it up that day and say the next day they give it to you. Why is there a?
Because it's not paid that day that they turn in their board.
So it.
It's impossible for us to get it ready and turn around and give it to y'all the next day.
Not well, a week, so.
Well, that's go through our docket, though, Steve.
Depending on the size of the election.
Yeah.
We have a vested possibilities.
Okay.
Let's talk about November.
Jay started it, I didn't.
So the November election is typically, that's the first few days after the whatever Monday, blah, 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 right?
That's true.
So you're going to get the forms in maybe, maybe by the fifteenth? Maybe?
That ain't going to be on the fifteenth claim document.
Right.
So we had an election on June twenty eighth. They were paid on July fifteenth.
Just a night through the game.
It just depends on when the.
That was just business in the government.
Yeah, so you can get your phone calls about check delays. You can say everything cycle, for us, everything cycles around the fifteenth of the month. That's when we approve our claims document. The checks go out on the afternoon of the fifteenth. If the claim document, the claim document's free, so you'll have your check within a day or two after the fifteenth.
I just don't understand that it has to go through the claim document. All these things like.
It's a different, it's a different day than it was twenty or thirty years ago when people wanted to be poll workers. They had this sense of home in America and that kind of stuff. And I'm not saying they don't really want to do it now, but it's, what are you going to give me and when am I going to get it? And I understand, I mean, some of the people that work in some of the polls that I have, oh, they really depend on this money because they're not babysitting today and making so much now, you know? Okay.
Any further additional business to be discussed? You got anything, Paul?
We do. We have to address the consent item.
I have, while they're sitting here, we have talked and it's, I mean, I don't, this is, it's no secret, our work, one of my biggest precincts moved from the Baptist Church at Cross Gates to another church where they're driving fuck. And before we try and go talk with the people at church, if it's clear that they just don't want this going on at their church, then I won't waste the time or whatever. Do you know, do y'all know? Because no one at the church has said anything to me.
At Cross Gate.
We heard, I mean, I've I've been, I've heard two different, one, it was there on the day that they were going to be having vacation Bible school or something. And I'm not asking them for a reason or anything. Can we find out or do I just need to go talk to them and see?
I'll talk to, I'll talk to Michael and see if Michael can reach out to him. He should have some contacts there.
Yeah.
If they're voting for it.
Most of the people would rather vote there.
They didn't have a problem with uh being there. They had a problem with being there that day and they didn't want to put a three year old call in their business and that's why we had to move, completely move.
Well, that's what I thought.
And the reason we made that change permanent for the year is it's hard to.
Well, I don't want to change it right now.
And then.
Yeah, I don't want to get in the middle of a deal. If we do it, it'd be go back for next.
For the year, there is.
So it's got to be one, one way or the not.
Yeah.
Other, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I got you.
All right, I think we got additional dealing with the lawn care.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Item one D on the consent agenda has been moved to additional business and so we would request a motion to add item one D from the consent agenda as a, as an item under additional business and maybe go ahead and do a motion to approve as well at the same time. Jay? What this will be is authorization for us to amend the lawn service agreement to add Old Fannin Road as a, as an item of service under your existing lawn care contract. And so it would just simply be to amend that contract to add the Old Fannin work. This will be conditioned upon an agreement that the price to be paid per cutting for that work is nineteen hundred dollars. And so that would be the motion.
I make motion to approve.
That's a motion to approve or to add.
Add and approve. All right, still both.
I'll make a second. And second, Mr. Kraus. Any further discussion?
I got a question. I got, how come, how come we can't cut it? I mean, seriously.
I mean, we do cut it, but not cut it often enough.
Yeah.
I mean, well, still, would it be, that'd be cheaper for us to cut?
Oh, God, yeah. Without a doubt.
Then why can't we cut it?
I think we have issued getting our manpower and our equipment in a timely manner, so.
Well, I mean, why can't that be adjusted or fixed?
I don't know, man.
I mean, what what's the problem? What is the problem? We can't cut it?
I have no idea.
Everybody out there wants to cut it once a week.
Or twice a week at least, not.
Twice a week, twice a week.
Once every two weeks.
Cut it every day.
Cut it every day.
What are you going to do? I mean.
Currently, we try to get to it once a month and it just looks like crap. And it's no lie, that is our busiest road that we have in the county.
I think that's.
It's a huge number.
Huge number.
Wouldn't prefer us do it, but we've not made.
I don't see why we.
Here would be my thing, and I'm going to second vote to approve it because I mean, a vote to agree to it. I think we run this system for the rest of the year, evaluate it, see where we're at going into spring of next year and see what we need to do in the next. It's one of these things that takes a little bit off Mike's guys to be able to do other things throughout the calendar. It's set right there at some point.
I agree. I agree with you and Jay. I think when we get to that point, we need to look and have it, we've got people that are on our bush hall group and I don't know that you don't establish three people or whatever in the summertime or summer, spring and summer that are on the lawnmower group and not just one road or two roads or designate the places that, I mean, I probably don't, I don't know that I've got one.
I don't know that I have either.
But I don't, I mean, if we're going to do it and have the expense of the trailers and lawn mowers and that kind of stuff, let's put them to work.
Well, you know, I would think.
Stay busy.
And I would think you got some.
Well, we bought mowers two years ago, maybe three now, but I know, I called Mike the other day and both of them were broke or one was broke, the other one, they just got repaired.
Now, I'm thinking the trustees help out on the road department on keeping that cut.
I would think that or I would think too, you got, you know, we always, we have in the past have had part time help. Some of the road crew have come back part time help.
Yeah, that's loud.
Huh? Anyway, part time, they would be willing to do that. I I just think that's an excessive amount that they could come back part time. And part time would be very fitting because it's only work through that certain period of time. And it'd be a part-time job, any, a part-time, it doesn't get cut all year anyway. What is it, three months?
Yeah.
More than that.
We bore maybe that.
Yeah, four months.
What is our contract? It's like, oh, in September?
Shoot, I'd say five months.
You think?
Half of May and half of September.
Two of frost.
September.
Two of frost.
Yeah, start slowing down, then it'll start getting cold.
Half of May, June, July, August.
Seven months, seven months.
I don't think you're gonna cut, you won't cut that that many times in seven months. Because it's your own yard.
I'm just saying, I mean, you got seven months worth of grass cut.
Yeah, well, so that means you're gonna pick seven times too, fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, right.
I tell you, you got, there's help out there now.
I'm glad we're getting somebody in. I prefer it, you know? I don't want us to have to hire somebody outside.
I just can't, we got, what's, what's wrong with our mowers? Have they used that much that they broke? We wore them out.
Well, that's what I asked Mike about. I was like, man, we just bought these.
Well, Mike, what's the deal with the mowers? I mean, do we, were they worn out?
No, you can't get.
We bought new mowers? Huh?
Sometimes when they are down, you can't get parts quickly now because it's just hard to get repair parts or any kind of parts or anything. All this COVID junk is really caused delays on a lot of things.
I just know, I just know my personal mower, if I got it fixed, it's not a problem getting it fixed. Because I had to hire somebody to cut mine if I didn't because it's gonna get away from you. And I'll have a problem, so I threw that ass.
I can tell you, I had to get two Spindles on mine. I hadn't got my mower back yet.
So that was, we got a motion to add. Now we need a motion to approve, a we-approved and add.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
I just can't see it for that kind of money.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
I wanna see it done, but I just don't see it done at that kind of money.
Okay.
Well, we got our own.
Well, let me say, I, I'm down with those, whatever change we need to get it done.
Yeah, me too.
This will get us through a short term until we can sort.
Provided, provided they will do it for amount of money.
That's, that's right.
Not responding.
Oh, really?
That's right.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, so Jay, when you communicate to them, it needs to be clear to them that we, we do not need an invoice unless it's for nineteen hundred dollars. Because we're not authorized to pay anything more than that. Like, they're welcome to submit an invoice for less than that.
What was some of the other bids?
There was, there was only two. And actually, the, the, the other bid quota guy was less than hers, to be honest, you know? But if she'll do it for nineteen, that'll be less than what the other guy was quoting.
Wait a minute, now you mean we're gonna offer it to somebody else?
This is an amendment.
Look, whenever, before we ever did any of this, I was getting numbers together just to see what our costs would be.
This, this is not a bid process. Y'all are already under contract for service. You're amending a service agreement. Jay was trying to get comfortable with what the cost would be. And he checked with another vendor, okay? So you're, you're not doing a bid deal here. This is amending your current service agreement. That's what's been authorized. So perhaps it'd be, Mr. President, with your permission, we'll move on to the next item. Let that go on past. Your next item that I need you to consider to add would be the authority to publish a notice of term bids related to your bridge components and bridge installation. This is specific to your ARPA project. I mentioned to you in, earlier in the meeting that I would be asking you to consider actions that would help us with our application process. This is what I'm talking about. Your current bridge installation and bridge component term bid agreement that is in place expires on August the thirty first. So I need to, I need authority to publish notice of term bids that will run from September the sixth, which is your board meeting date, until next August the thirty first. That will cover bridge installation and bridge components specifically related to your ARPA projects, okay?
Is that our goal? I mean, we got it for a year, right?
Yes, sir. We were going to delay doing anything with bridge components and bridge installation until later this year and get it lined up with your other term bids so that they all kind of run and expire in the same frequency. But we can't do it for bridge installation, bridge components because we have to have agreements in place when we submit your applications. Y'all don't want us to wait till January to start submitting.
We're doing it for just a little over a year.
It's, it's actually less than a year, September sixth through August thirty first. So it'd be just barely a week less than a full year. But the timing of this is out of line because of the way that the ARPA process is working. We have to have these agreements in place with your installer, with your component supplier, before we submit your ARPA application. So we, I need you to do this today because we gotta get after it to get your term bid set at a point where it's useful for us when we make our applications.
Can we do it all in one motion?
Please do. Authority to publish notice of term bids, bridge components and bridge installation. Add and approve.
Would it be a problem continuing this through December or?
That's what I'm saying, why don't we just realign the vacuum?
Or do you have?
Here, here's why. Thank you for asking that. The way that we procured the term bids that we have right now does not include the federal special language. I have to have the federal special language in the publication and I have to procure those with the special federal language in there.
I'm saying, send it, donate it in August, even if it's December. So next year, you'll get it live.
I'm gonna defer to you guys to tell me that y'all are comfortable with doing more than a year. I'm good with that.
That way we get them all on schedule.
I, I'm good with that. I, I don't have, I'm ambivalent about when to terminate. I, I don't really care. I just didn't want to go over a year because that's typically not our process to go over a year by. All right, so, quick update. It looks like that what we're gonna do is to have the term bids that we're about to take advertisements on and take responses on will run from September the sixth through December the thirty first of twenty-three.
Okay. So do I have a motion to add and approve? Term bid.
Our other attorney.
Authority to add the bridge installation and components relating to the ARPA.
Add and approve.
And approve.
Okay, I got it. Motion by Mr. Gaines, they'll have a second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Bishop. Any other discussion, further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed alike, son. Motion carried.
You're doing good, Brad.
I'm trying, trying to get out of here by ten o'clock.
That'd be good.
Second session gonna blow this whole plan out of order.
Yeah, learn that.
What we doing here? This is assisting your current precinct map right here. This is your current one. All right? So I'm gonna walk you through.
Could we like maybe have a copy?
I think I'm gonna walk you through, we'll make sure you guys get a copy. I'm gonna walk you through changes that I need you to authorize and what you really need to understand.
I know, I know.
We went over this on Thursday. And I told you that the only change in your district was combining two twenty-one and moving it into five oh nine. Yeah, so the folks that used to vote somewhere else are now gonna vote at Floakland Library. Right?
Yep.
That's the only change for District Five. So today, I need you to say that that's good with me and I'm, I'm gonna do that. There were two changes, I believe, Steve, of your district. But you're gonna have to give me just a second to see if I, I'm hoping, Brad, I got my notes.
This is where I'd use Mike Word. He was at the gym this morning at five forty-five. I drove by, saw him. I didn't stop, but Word. Come up here in your tight shirt in a second. Come here, Word. This one, Word's taking me one of these all hands guys.
I really need a copy of that because.
Word, hold this thing up right here to walk Gaines through here.
Daniel?
You get a show horse like Word, you gotta use it.
So Word's holding the map.
This is the old map.
That's old map right there. Daniel?
Sir?
There is a portion of existing Liberty five oh nine that is north and east of Lutney that is being moved to Castle Woods West.
Yeah, I know where, I'm good with mine. I've seen mine.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
There's one change for you. Current two twelve, which is Fannin. Look up at the very top end of your district. That, everything north of four seventy-one and west of twenty-five, north of four seventy-one and west of twenty-five is going to four oh seven Pisgah.
Okay.
That's the only change.
That sliver between four seventy-one and twenty-five is staying as is. Is that?
If it's.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're only concerned with this right here?
Correct.
Okay. That's what, I'm pretty sure that's what we gotta agree on.
That's going to Pisgah.
Yep.
All right, Jared, yours. Brad, you have no changes. Jared, yours, well, you do have changes, but they don't, they don't affect any of your voters. Okay, you're losing voters. All right, Jared, there's, there's a lot of stuff happening with yours and so pay attention to.
Yeah.
Word.
So that Jared can see what, what he's got currently and what he's, what he's adding.
Yeah, let's narrow it right down. I go ahead, I know what.
Look at.
I, I can follow. I think you just tell it.
Look at precinct three twenty-one, find precinct three twenty-one.
Got it.
That's called South Brandon.
Yeah.
Everything in three twenty-one that is south of Tumbleloo, Tumbleloo Creek.
This is the old map. That's the new map?
That's, that's correct.
This is twenty-one, this is twenty-two.
Got you.
South of Tumbleloo Creek, west of Star Road. That's going to one nineteen Briar Hill.
Okay. They got a good little piece of drive. They gonna be aggravated.
Yep. Three twenty-three, which is currently greenfield.
Mm-hmm.
South of Tumbleloo Creek. South of Richland Creek.
That's Man of White.
That's going to Briar Hill, one nineteen.
He got it, yeah.
Okay, nothing's going to, to Star?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
We got one more going to Briar Hill.
Look at three twelve, which is Dry Creek. If it's west of Star Road and north of Thomasville Road, that's headed to Briar Hill.
Boy, that's gonna be some upset people.
If it's three twelve, three twelve Dry Creek and it's south of Thomasville Road and west of Star Road.
Everything west of Star Road is, is me now. I know that.
So that, that's headed to Star. That's what's going to Star. It's that part of Dry Creek.
Is that, would that go to, I mean, does that go to like maybe McLaurin School? Or is it south, north of McLaurin School?
Wherever, it's, it's wherever Thomasville Road intersects with Star.
Oh, it's, oh, it's gonna be all the way down to Thomasville Store. Good little path.
Everybody from there, I guess.
Yeah, west, south.
Everything north goes, everything north.
South. Straight up. I'm just kidding.
So Thomasville, okay, we, Thomasville Road really, but the ones on Thomasville Road are gonna go to.
If they're on the north side, they go to Briar Hill. If they're on the south side, they go to Star.
On Thomasville Road?
Yes.
Oh, it's gonna be a storm of upset people.
Hold that up, that Harris, to see it real quick.
So you're saying Thomasville Road, everything on the south side it is going to Star?
Yes.
Yes.
And the north side?
That's correct. The Secretary of State requires that the middle of the road, if that's serving as a precinct boundary, the middle of the road is the break point.
Well, they need to explain that when they send the letter out.
Well, but that's, you know, that's the circuit clerk's responsibility to send out the notifications.
Explain that, because otherwise I gotta explain that one.
I don't know how they determine what goes on the notice. That's totally her responsibility.
I mean, you had the north side moderated, I had the south side.
But they, they went along with it forever.
What I.
But they don't get it. They won't ever change. Well, it'll help them, really. Mother?
So, so if y'all understand what we just went through.
They don't, but go ahead, we'll understand it.
Yeah. As long as y'all understand what we just went through.
Yeah.
I need y'all to, I need y'all to formally adopt your precinct boundaries as they are reflected on the map that you've just been presenting.
That'll be my motion to add.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion to add by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the map as adopted. Did we need to get Word to hold them back up or everybody good?
Yeah, I'm good. So a motion to approve by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines. Any other discussion? Not all, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed alike, son.
I think all of the information now that needs to be sent to, to the circuit clerk concerning notifications to voters has already been sent. But I want you to understand that information has got to go to circuit clerk now. Notifications will go out to your voters about these changes and that process is underway now.
This will be from November?
Yes, sir. That's correct. The, I think it'll actually be in place as it relates to the school board sooner than that, Brad, because they're gonna have a special.
That's what they said, make you say.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we will, we'll do everything we can. Of course, the, the, these precinct changes that you just made will result in no ballot splits for either supervisors or election commissioners. Y'all have exactly the same districts.
Hey, what does that do for the constables?
It, it could potentially result in a few ballot splits for constables. There's only four of them. And so there, there's not good, their districts don't overlay perfectly.
Yeah.
There will be some ballot splits.
Because of, of that Dry Creek.
Yep. The constables and justice court judges will be, will have some ballot splits, but not supervisors, not election commissioners. I wanted to remind you guys that there's a summer tonight. Don't forget, I'm sorry, Wednesday night. Don't forget that.
Big thing. My caller said Wednesday.
Wednesday night.
Hey, I've got some executive session stuff for personnel.
Mr. Harrison's got something and additional business to be discussed also.
Yeah, okay. One item also that, that I failed to mention is we need authorization to put together a big bid package for the roof at the, at the Florence Library. So we need, we need authorization to put together that and to communicate that bid package and to get a notice of publication on that bid package as well. We should do it all as one. If we can get that motion added and approved as well.
I make motion add.
And approve.
Motion made by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed alike, son. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Oh. Late Friday evening, sorry to put this on additional business, but late Friday evening, me and one and Keaton kind of working on some numbers. And what we come out in my pace schedule, we got a lot of equipment coming off this year that got buybacks. And so what we're looking at is we've got a little bit of money left in this year's budget to do this. What I'd like to do is get authorization to pay our two loaders off and one excavator and we'll buy those outright. And then we'll be replacing the two loaders once we get auction price on the two loaders and buy two new loaders for, we're not gonna do a lease purchase on them. We're just gonna do a four-year warranty. Get it sustaineded out and then we'll sell them at whatever point we get ready to sell them.
Because your buybacks should be pretty good, shouldn't they?
They, they're pretty good right now. I haven't got confirmed numbers, Daniel. They're supposed to come look at the equipment this week, but we've got some equipment. This is just something we need to do in this year's budget.
So is this for Kenworth that we've had a year that we're fixing to get rid of and buy more?
Actually, we've, yes, actually, we've paid for those trucks, Jay, because the other ones hadn't come in. Our other ones are gonna start trickling in.
Pay it off still in inventory.
Right.
So you're wanting to get rid of those and buy a full more?
No, no, no. The two loaders.
Two front-end loaders.
Two front-end loaders. I got a road at the bottom of the sheet.
Yeah, but you had in Prince's out here. Why don't you do?
Oh, I just, that was just my deal. I was scratching on that one. I made that deal right there. That was just me looking at something.
So I'm, so I'm assuming you're wanting to take the two loaders that you got currently now. Go ahead and pay those off.
Yes, sir.
And.
So you can sell them.
Yeah, I mean, we got to pay them off to get our titles and stuff from the bank.
And buy two more new loaders to replace those.
Whenever they come in, yes.
When they come in.
I think they'll be in by the end of this physical year, Brad.
That's my question, why are we?
We got about five thousand hours on these loaders, Jared. And reading this a little difficult on loaders. We actually had a four, they should have come off this year. It should have been four, they was forty-eight months. And we ended up financing them for fifty-four for some reason. And so it took us past our time. I mean, they're gonna honor the buyback of them. But we can either sell them back to them or we can take it to auction. I think we can make some money of them. Yes.
So we, so we don't bid out anything anymore like we used to?
Well, everything's on state contract now. You know, what I do is just look at the, look at the state contract and whoever is, got the best deal is what we go with. On that.
But we're not doing twelve months anymore?
No, sir.
No, sir. No, sir. We, we took that to three years this, on this bid cycle, Jay. That's too much flopping around. I mean, we got good money for the trucks, but it's just.
I was thinking that when you did it, but.
Yeah, I did too.
I mean, it's just, well, we got some stuff we got to do to the trucks and it's just too much flopping around. So we want three years. That works the best for us.
So tell me, you got, you got two here, right? That are coming off this year that you got planned to pay off. What'd you get the third one down here for? What is that? The, the one three oh nine?
One three oh nine is in our rental fleet that we've got. And to pay off of it, I mean, that machine's very low hour. It's still under the warranty. And so we're just gonna buy it, buy it out of the budget.
Where is it at on here, Mike?
Uh, it's about middle ways, Jay. Since three oh nine dash oh seven.
Oh, there it is. I see it now. Okay. So it comes off next year?
It actually comes off next year. We're just gonna pay it off earlier instead of paying the rental note on that. And that's the estimated number I gave you right, when I said ninety-seven thousand. Yes, sir, that's the estimated number right now. It won't be over that. Probably less.
And you're planning on keeping that, correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm, that'll go in our inventory fleet.
Oh, you're gonna keep that one?
Yes, sir, because we just, I mean, we use that machine, but it, it goes kind of with my big, I don't get it used every day. Yes, sir, cause we just, I mean, we use that machine, but it, it goes kinda with my big, I don't get used every day.
You know, man, I would feel like a list of everything we have, you know?
In lease?
Or just period.
Inventory.
Just, uh.
I wouldn't mind seeing one either.
Like a master list, you know? So that, uh, we would know, have an idea anyway. I, I mean, I know it's impossible for us to keep up with it. It is for me anyway. But yeah, that looks good.
Okay.
Hey, I got a question, just.
Yes, sir.
For additional, I guess, too, since you up here. Uh, I got a, I don't know if everybody, I'm sure have, got a good many roads seriously need re-striping. And we got a striping machine that we bought.
We've been striping every day for the last month, it's just.
Well, I mean, contractors stripe some.
They're stripping our new roads that we're putting the reflectors on, Jared, uh.
Yeah, I mean.
Our striping machine can't lay out. It's hard for us to lay out a new road, cause it don't have the cap. It's designed for re-striping, is what it's designed for.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they need, that's what they, they need re-striping, let me rephrase that. They got stripes on them, but they're all blurred.
Faded out.
Huh?
Just faded.
Yeah, yeah, real faded out, and, you know, even some, you know, and, and hate this, but when, uh, we're asphalt and, and they running roads, they get where that, the tire have just about taken the stripes out, you know?
Well, I think you, you see, is helping out with the road department on running the stripes.
Actually, Mike and him's helping us with it, and we're, we're running every day with the striping.
Yeah, well, I, what do we need to do? Just, I need to come up with a list then?
Yes, it's different from mine. I mean, I've got several roads in District One on the list to be done, that, you know, we're trying to re-stripe at least our heavy traffic roads, try to keep them striped every, you know?
You know that.
Paint don't last as long, so we try to stripe them every couple of years.
So Mike, are you, did I understand what you said right? Any road that we overlay, we gotta get somebody else to come do?
Pretty well, I do.
I ain't worth that.
Well, I mean, we just in paint.
Yeah, but now, the, those rural new roads, they're not state aid anything, so we, I mean, that's a little different, ain't that right?
Yeah.
The little rural back roads like Pierce and all they live on?
Right.
You know?
But now, we put a good thermoplastic down, and it'll last a long time, and then we'll come back and maintain the striping from there as it fades. All it's what we kinda doing, Jay, on it, uh.
So.
But to lay out a new road, we don't have, our striping truck does not have that capability. Now, we can, but it ain't perfect. I, I was gonna tell y'all then.
I thought, yeah, I thought.
I don't think none of us are asking for perfection. We just need something out of there.
I understand.
Edge of the road and let them.
But like our chips.
Senior citizens need that.
Like, like our chip seals, our chip seal roads that we just chip and follow, we strip them ourselves. I don't spend the money on that.
What was different than that in asphalt then?
I mean, you just got pretty asphalt down. It's nice to put a pretty nice stripe down.
Asphalt's usually where your high-traffic areas are.
Pierce is just, uh.
It's just micro, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, but I mean, you're talking about, if nothing goes wrong, we should be good with that road five or six years down the road.
I mean, clear road needs it, I mean, it's, all of them, a, a lot of them are faded out now.
But just like Florence, I re-stripped it last year, and it's already faded again, you know, paint just, like you said, if the tires are rubbing over on it and traffic on it.
That's just stretched from about, uh, the full way toward Florence. Man, this, I've already had some calls on it, and that's where they had to run. So, you know, the road's narrow, so they ran on the line most of the time.
That's right. So, but I, yeah, I gave, if you don't mind, give me your list and I.
Well, that's something I wish, I, I mentioned it before, I wish, like when your asphalt or chip sealing or whatever we're doing, I'd like to have a physical list, because it's pretty bad to go to church and somebody thanks you for a road and you didn't even know it was done. I'd like to have that to be able to know, uh.
Last one, you just said, ma'am, you were?
Oh, I did, I did, but you know, and the next one go, when's mine gonna be done? I say, well, I'm not sure, and find out it's actually on the list, you know? You know, of what we're doing, but I'd like to have, that, that's always pretty simple to do. And it's like just striping, uh, people call about it. If I know, it's real easy, just say, well, it's on the list, it's gonna be done.
So Mike, since we did, I'm sorry.
No, I, I'm just saying, I like to know what we're doing.
Specifically, uh, Riverbend, you know, I, I, I really use a little bit there, but like Burnham Road, we did some asphalt, we're running it stopped. So we need to get somebody else to come in to do that.
I was told Jake was gonna handle that, but now.
Burnham Road?
Yeah, cause that's, they patrol up to that side right there.
No.
Okay, if they didn't, then I'll get it handled.
Yeah, that ain't even in the.
Okay, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, like me and Jake, me and Jake are talking about it, he was, but anyway, I have.
Burnham Road?
I, I'll take care of that.
Is that your three miles out in the county?
They, they don't even have, they don't even have, they don't even touch Burnham Road.
I understand that, but I mean, they, he just called me one day, and I said, if you wanna handle it, handle it.
Well, he's not handling it.
Okay, so I will handle it.
So we need to do a motion on, on this equipment deal, or pay it off?
Need to add it, need to add it, and then make my.
Add and approve.
Yes, authorization for the county administrator to handle all the documentation, sign all documents necessary to.
So just, what are we gonna use in the meantime?
We, we're gonna keep the equipment to the other crew that comes in. That's, that's the reason we're paying it off.
Y'all still talking about Harrison?
Yeah.
Yes, but we done got on striping and everything else too.
Alright, so we need a motion now to add and approve.
I made a motion to add this item to the agenda.
And approve also? I think you said we could do it all at once.
Oh, I'm good with it. Yeah, we can do them all together today.
We doing them all together.
Next time, if they told me.
Alright, so I got a motion to add and approve by Mr. Bishop. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
So, is there a need for exec session?
Yeah, there is.
Personnel?
Personnel and, uh, some, uh, contracts.
Grab them.
You got a motion then? Yeah, I make most of us need for exec session.
Second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign.
That was the easiest Harrison.
For personnel and, uh.
Second.
Motion to, to go in by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross. We are now going in exec session.